I'd like to call the meeting to an end. I have five o'clock as of right now. Welcome, everyone. The board did meet in closed session today and we have a report of action. In closed session this afternoon, Superintendent President Sanders has also recommended to Board Director that the board -- recommended to the board, I apologize, that the Director of the Learning Resource Center be released from her appointment as an educational administrator. The Director of the Learning Resource Center's appointment is scheduled to expire on June 30th, 2013. The board had a roll call vote and the result was a 5-0 in favor of releasing the Director of the Learning Resource Center from her appointment as an educational administrator. The board further directs that Superintendent President Karrasosa be designated to proceed with any and all processing procedures that accompany this action. Dan, you can leave.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is public comments. Do you have any public comments concerning items on the agenda? Public comments concerning items not on the agenda? Sure. Please state your name for the registry.
Point of order, I have a question. I'm not sure where -- I would like to speak, but I'm not sure where to speak. When I'm going to speak at the point that something's on the agenda or will it come down?
If you have a question, Sharon, on anything that's on the agenda, she's going to give us the opportunity to speak in the public comment section on any items that would be on the agenda. Right. Or any items then that would not be on the agenda. But it happens during the public comment section.
So Sharon, do you want clarification if you were on or off the agenda so you know if you should go? Because I did go pass on her, I just didn't say.
Right. She did ask if anybody had any public comment for items that were on the agenda. Would you like to comment on an item that's on the agenda?
I can't tell where it is. I'm assuming that when Michelle speaks that she will be doing that.
So I'm not on the agenda, but it is something in my report, so I assume that either way.
And I can talk after you?
No, not after you.
Right. Michelle will give her Costa -- I mean, I'm sorry, her academic senate president report. If you want to comment on anything that Michelle's going to talk about, you can do that following Ms. Andrews' comments.
Okay.
My name is Amy Andrews and I'm the Director of the Learning Resource Center. I was informed in writing of my rights regarding the removal of my board. Because I was informed of my rights, I'd like to ask that the recommendation made today and concession be removed from the agenda until I'm informed in writing correctly of my rights.
Do you want to speak to that, John? Do a beat.
Hey, me too.
Okay. If you were informed that you, as an employee, would have an opportunity to address the board in closed session as a recommended non-relection of a probationary employee, that was a miscommunication on our part, but it doesn't change the fact that that's not the right of an employee as a probationary employee under the condition of non-relection. So while it was misinformation on our part, it won't -- it doesn't change procedurally what happened and it wouldn't be due any differently otherwise. As a probationary employee coming in, being considered for a non-relection under a -- without cause provision, you don't have the opportunity to meet with the board. It's not your right under the law.
May I be informed of that in writing? May I make that request?
Certainly.
May I at least read a statement?
May I?
In the closed session? Can you do that now? Despite the circumstances for the year, I would like to thank you for the opportunity to see what I've had. Unfortunately, you're witnessing one of the most beautiful moments of my life, one of the sickest moments of my life. In writing March 1st, I learned that my employment contract with the College of the Sequoias will be terminated at the end of this year. Unfortunately, HR is not permitted to disclose to me the cause of termination. Without understanding the specific cause of this action, it has been difficult to determine what is most relevant and appropriate to say to you. I cannot make a defense against unknown charges, and I do not want to use this opportunity to voice my frustration or express negativity. The most I can share with you is my experience at COS and the questions that lead me to state speculation. First, I'd like to describe my qualifications for the position which I was hired for. I have two master's degrees. One is in the field of library information studies, which is a professional qualification for librarians. I'm also a doctoral candidate in public sector management at the University of Oregon. I have 14 years of professional library experience. For two years, I was employed by the British Library. The remaining 12 years, I was employed in educational systems at California State University and the University of California. Most recently, I was employed at a federal college in the United Arab Emirates where I was charged with the oversight and administration of library services for the graduate divisions of seventeen campuses located throughout the Emirates. I have authored several peer-reviewed journal articles in the field of librarianship, and I've been invited to teach librarianship skills at universities in Mexico, India, and Iran. Presently, I serve on both national and regional committees of various library organizations, including the National Library of Medicine, the Association of College and Research Libraries, the Academy of Information Professionals, and Librarians Without Borders. I have a certificate in evidence-based research practices from Tufts University, a certificate in executive leadership from Cornell University, and TESL certification to teach English as a second grad. Finally, though the majority of my work experience comes from four-year institutions, I have a diverse range of experiences directly from the College of the Sequoias. I was a COS student from 1985 to 1987. I was also a COS adjunct art instructor, and my first job out of library school was as a COS adjunct librarian. Nevertheless, on March 1st of this year, I was told that I am not, quote, "a good match" for COS, unquote. After the LRC staff heard of my termination, I was faced with their emotional reactions. I was told, quote, "It figures, the best boss I've ever had." And from someone who has worked for several COS library directors, "You're the best director we've ever had." And from a 10-plus-years COS veteran, "The only director who knew anything about communication." I received unanimous support from the LRC staff, as evidenced by a signed letter of support submitted to Dr. Villalisa. I've also received numerous offers of letters of reference from COS staff outside the LRC. These offers came from individuals that I have worked with to solve problems and to get things done. As one member of another department stated, "In the past, we dreaded working with the library; now we say, 'No problem,' and you will get it." I believe in libraries and the provision of outstanding student support and service. I have the highest standards for the work I do, and my professional goal is to make the libraries and libraries the best of the best. If my commitment to quality service is being misunderstood or viewed as overly zealous, then I do apologize. I can assure you that my only intention has been to do the work set before me. The day we learned of the show cost sanction, I sent President Karrasosa an email of support on behalf of the LRC. I let him know that we were committed to doing the work set before us, and we look forward to a positive and productive future. But now my contract is terminated. I have a record of accomplishment in the library, but no one ever inquired about it. I have unanimous support of the LRC staff, for which I agree, but they were never consulted about my competence or leadership. So now I'm left with what became the great mystery of my professional life. What did I do that was so egregious? I have an impeccable professional track record, and I feel 100% confident that you could contact anyone I have worked with in my entire career: library colleagues, faculty, administrators, or students, and you would receive a positive and enthusiastic reference. In view of the support of LRC staff that I work with day after day, a staff that holds me accountable for every single thing I do, a staff that has seen me in good times and in moments of stress, and that still will attest to my work, my disposition, and my leadership capabilities, and in the face of a show cost sanction in which the library is explicitly mentioned, the president still believes I did something so offensive that it does not merit the college to provide me guidance, support, or feedback so I can prove or at the very least be provided with the option to submit my own resignation. Again, the same question: what did I do that was so unforgivable it mandates permanent action? I do not know what you might hear after I leave or what you have heard, and I will not have the opportunity to address those charges, but I can assure you that all my efforts at COS have been well intentioned and my work ethic has been honorable. Members of the board, I'm Mr. Karrasosa. I wish you the best with the show cost sanction. I have no doubt that the work will be done and the college will move forward.
Do we have any other public comments concerning items not on the agenda?
Actually, I really didn't want to go next. I think that was pretty emotional, and it's always stressful when you hear something like that, no matter who's doing it. My name is Sharon Black. I feel like I've been here for 100 years. I actually interviewed for the job in this room, and I love being at COS. I'm 70 and a half, and I don't know how much longer I'm going to continue to work with students at COS as a counselor. One of the things that I learned coming from Anford High School to COS was that communicating in a community college with students, with faculty, and with staff is very different than what I had experienced at a high school. If I wanted information back from a teacher or faculty member or maintenance people, I put a note in their mailbox. That would come the information, maybe even that same day. And I was given the project of doing a reentry program, and so I wanted to get input from faculty and certificated. So I put notes in the mailboxes. Two weeks went by. I had ten back. I went home. I told my husband, "They don't like me. I'm a counselor. They don't like me." He said, "Well, what do you mean?" I said, "Well, I put notes in the box." He said, "Well, maybe that isn't going to work. You have to communicate differently." One of the faculty told me, "Well, maybe if you put a naked lady on your note, it's 85% mail at that toll. You'll probably get a lot back." And so I did. I put two naked, a naked caveman and a naked cave lady in cartoon form. Within a week, I had 70% of the information I needed from people. So that really obtained me an idea about paying attention to how we communicate, what works at one system doesn't necessarily work at another one. What works at one community college, depending on size and economics, doesn't necessarily work at another one. The other thing when I came was there was no division chair. And that's really what I'm coming to, is the division chair. There has to be a process to communicate effectively with the instructional faculty, the administrators, the academic senate that forwards policy to the board, the curriculum committee. I was chairman of the curriculum committee for seven years. I learned a lot about counting units, counting minutes, the budget. One year, we built a budget that would -- built a schedule that would not support our student content. You know, I mean, you do the best you can, but the numbers weren't right. And I learned about working on those kinds of committees. Counseling is part of the body. It is not the whole body. The students are part of the body. The administrators are part. You know the parts. But it is difficult to communicate without trust, you know? Email, telephone. I think I'm probably known for going to see a person rather than just sending them a note or an email. I think Stan can attest to that, can't you? Yes? Yes? Yes, because I think that that's important, to develop trust. And with the division chair in student services, it's not just counseling, it's not just work experience, it's not just health center, it's not just DRC, EOP, and all the different The other areas touch counseling just as much as the counseling touches those areas. When Fresno State happens to mention that they've changed their liberal studies program and instead of requiring two U.S. history classes, they've decided to only ask for one. We send a lot of students to Fresno State in the major of, with a liberal studies major, elementary ed. Well, if you cut the request in half and you're still offering the same amount of U.S. histories, that's not in the best interest of those students. Economically, it's not in the best interest. When the UC said, "Well, you're not going to have anybody admitted unless you have a critical thinking class," which we now call English 2, and we also have philosophy 25, who was the first school to match Berkeley's English classes to be accepted by the state of California? COS. Partially because when we went to the training, we said, "Hey, you guys, there is a few things coming, and we need to do it right away," because that is an admissions requirement. You can have a beautiful application, you can be the most brainy student, but if you don't have English 1, English 2, and a math class that transfers, your application will go no further. So those kind of things are important. And division chair, by sitting on the different committees, paying attention to the budget, knowing when the flow of the traffic is as far as scheduling, it's an important position. And I think we went through -- I can remember, we went through a time when we're not going to have any of the division chair scheduled classes, and I think that went to like three quarters, and that was a waste of time. I think that -- my point is this: the division person is the person that's on the front line. You see something that doesn't work, you try to talk to that other area. You might talk to admissions. Admission comes down and talks to you and says, "This isn't working," or "Maybe we can make a change." We had a situation where students were being certified on the wrong sheet, which didn't give them certification, which also means that their admissions was being recalled. By going and talking to somebody, having a meeting, in an hour, we had it straightened out.
Sharon?
Yes.
That wasn't a call. That was our buzzer going off.
Oh, sorry.
So you have 30 more seconds.
30 more seconds. I hope you know how passionate I am about this. We've had a division chair for 23 years. People volunteered to become division chair, they get voted in the same way that you are voted into your offices, and I just can't get you how important that position is. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Richie Zuccelli. I'm a resident veteran of the student chair at COS. I'm in my second semester here, and I came to this institution to participate in the Aron Addix Program in search of proof of validation. Now, during that, my first semester was in class at the Tulare Airport, and I would not have to worry about parking, there was free parking there at the airport. And now, due to a medical condition, I'm unable to continue in that program, so I've transferred here to my autograph to the science degree. Sorry.
Five minutes, man.
That was actually all the file I were plumbing. I need to get the class. I'm at the Tulare Center campus five days a week and here in Vesalia two days a week. While I'm here in Vesalia, I've been parking across the street where I don't have to pay for parking, and just because it's simpler and easier to find parking. Down at Tulare, it's not so simple, because you got a large parking lot and not a whole lot of parking off-campus. Having attended previous institutions who issued veterans parking permits, I was unaware that this institution had a different policy, and I subsequently had a parking violation after that. I did purchase a parking permit, but I am here today on behalf of all the veterans of this school, because I would like to see the policy changed so that veterans receive free parking. I've heard that past attempts to the policy change have failed, and the reason I was given was that if that's get free parking, why not get free parking to athletes, honor students, students on the dean's list, et cetera? And my response to that is, as a veteran of the U.S. Army, I swore oath, protect this country and the kind of prostitution from enemies foreign and domestic. And many of my friends who swore that same oath gave their life. There is nothing that compares to swearing that oath and offering to sacrifice your own life in defense of this country. No student who athlete or braids will reflect that type of commitment. So I would like to suggest a modification of the parking policy to grant students who serve their country honorably free parking while they are registered as a full-time student at COS. A model of how the system might look like can be found at Alfred State's frequently asked question page about veteran parking there at SUNY Institution. And to summarize how their program works, they issue free parking to veteran students who apply for a voucher by providing proof of honorable service. They provide this only to their veteran students, not faculty, at the list because the school is being paid for the student's attendance, and it pays the facility for faculty to be there. They get automatically granted waiver to every veteran. They only grant it to those honorably served, full-time, and those who apply for it. The veteran has to fill out a form and take it in and submit with proper noncommunication. I would like to see a policy like this instituted here at COS, and I think it would be of interest.
Do we have any other public comments concerning items not on the agenda?
Elena Sayet. Information competence over in COS.
I'm sorry, did you say?
Elena Sayet. I spoke here in November telling how the college that I used to be proud of is muting people, disposing of people. I can't recognize people I respected and admired and knew. And honestly, after what's been done to Amy, I honestly wonder, is this college that disposes of people of such quality and integrity even worth saving? Who would want to work here if you lose people like Amy? And for those of you that are not from the library, you could recognize that space this whole week because it was like a cemetery, because people that worked there for 10, 20, 30 years have never, ever witnessed anybody, anybody, any administrator that was like Amy. And we're losing her now when we're trying to get back her accreditation. We're losing her now when we need to write another report. I mean, who can pull us out from the basement? Library is the heart of the college, and the heart has been bleeding for a week and will be bled to death by the end of June. I'm not trying to be melodramatic, I apologize. We do write a letter. It was presented to Vice President of Academic Instruction. It had six pages with all the wonderful projects that Amy has done. She was to save college about $90,000. And she already saved a lot, even this year only. If for nothing else, you know, people that care for numbers should be paying attention when they burn it. It was signed by everybody that worked there. Classified people, faculty, all the staff. She expressed 100% support from all of us. We never heard the reason, nobody of us could even guess, what was the reason for her to leave? What was so offensive to whom? And instead of being speechless, I chose to express my frustration, and I just honestly worry about a college. I was -- I'm part of subcommittee. I serve on subcommittee that's trying to save the college. I'm willing to give my expertise, time, anything for COS. But as I mentioned before, if we willingly sacrifice or dispose of people of value like Mrs. or Ms. Andrews and you, Paula, then what can we expect? What can anybody expect here? Thank you.
Do we have any further public comments concerning items not on the agenda?
Hello. Point of information, question? And this comes from Sandy Hodges. At the last study board session, you voted not to renew the lease at the church for the CVC, and her question to me was, can you do that kind of voting at a study session?
Yes.
Is that -- okay. So it does not have to be done at the board meeting?
A study session is a board meeting, and it was adjourned as a public board meeting, and it was listed under that study session topic as an action item.
As an action item. So you can take at-study sessions action items? Thank you.
If it's on the agenda.
Right.
See no further public comments, we will move on to our student trustee report. Yes, please.
So far, ASP has been opening up and running. We've had -- trying to put a calendar together for the semester. One big date that we had was lobby day, March 4th. They took total 36 for representatives from COS to Sacramento. They're taking two representatives to the Washington DC trip. They leave 14th of March through the 20th. The campus newspaper is sending up a president's form. I don't know the date, but they said it's going to be available. Students are involved in the accreditation task force. I think there are four students standing that are signed up for that?
Actually, we have six.
Six? The last time I checked in this form, we have six. Something that's really big is coming up is April 6th. We're going to have campus tours for high school seniors that are going to show up around, and they're going to do that on all three campuses, not just outside. So besides that, it's supposed to be.
Are you guys considered like ambassadors or just ASP students in general who have to speak English? Who does the tours?
ASP students.
ASP students, yeah. Sounds great. Any questions again? Board member reports.
I would just like to comment on a board meeting last. We have a vice high school by students getting updated if we got on the BTEC program and how well that's working for the students. If I remember correctly, 95% of the seniors in that class are going to be going on to college. 10% somewhere else, 5% were undecided, and 85% of them are 10% somewhere else, 5% were undecided, and 85% are going to go into COS. I was impressed with the report and the program.
I attended a couple of events and I'm sorry you missed out, the board members. The Hall of Fame Dinner that was held was very well attended and was a very nice event. And the other thing was the CTA Board Recognition Dinner at the Merriah. That was a very good event. You missed out on a great, great New York State dinner. So for those of you who want something out of CTA, you need to attend those meetings that they do. It was a very nice, nice meeting.
Any other board member comments or thoughts?
I'm going to disagree with Greg for me, as I say Unified School District was, I think, very fruitful to the college. We communicate with our high school districts on what they're doing, make sure that as a college we're staying at the board in tune with their board and the needs of the community. And we serve more than that high school district, but it becomes very valuable, especially during these times when budgets get tight, students don't know where to go or what their options are. It's so important we stay in communication so that we can provide the best opportunities for our students here locally.
Accreditation, no, sorry, foundation report, Greg.
Laurie, one thing I'm really impressed by at Vice High Unified is they're taking student success seriously. And they've committed success.
Steve, are you feeling better?
Yeah. Something I said. We have a couple of events currently not being planned for Visalia. I have a major fundraiser for the year. First, Skip Marwicke of the Tulare Chapter is hosting a, all the board members at its home on April 10th and all of you are invited as well. It was an attempt to get everybody together with their spouses and get to know each other better. This one is important.
We get something to write?
Yeah, we get an invitation. We are in the process of reading scholarships. Scholarships that the various committees are, should have received them electronically. Or if they've not received them, they'll have the next two weeks. Scholarship night is May 9th. We're going to do something, the actual award ceremony is the 7th, but we're going to attempt, I mean, at 7:00 PM, but we're going to attempt at 6:00 PM to have a reception for the recipients and the donors so that these people get to know each other prior to, the way it is, has been in the past, you just receive the envelope and sit down and that's the only interaction. So we hope to create some kind of bond between the donor and the recipient. The next two weeks, all of the chapters will have that, but the executive committee will be in March 19th at noon. We are in the process of planning the Visalia chapter. We should put this date down, May 25th, it's a Thursday evening. You will receive a more observation as the COS regatta. And we are planning an event at the home of Stan Carroll Trapp, which happens to be on Mill Creek. And it is going to be, when we arrive, we will be selling sponsorships at various little boats. And we're going to put them in the water upstream. And whoever boat wins, it goes under the bridge. We will have getting on those boats and I think it'll be a fun evening, incredible evening. We're going to bring a lot of younger people out to Foundation, the Foundation event. So that is a great thing to do.
Accreditation report? Is there a prize?
Is there a prize?
Yeah.
I haven't determined it yet.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. If you look at, you have in your packet, there is a packet of information for the accreditation report. The first item, it's under 16. It's a little blue tab. Look for your blue tab. Is, what I'm going to do today, this is the first time that we've met in an official board meeting regarding the accreditation since our order of show cause. And so I am going to take this opportunity to present the accreditation response plan. So as you can see on the first page, we were, based on our visitation in October 2012, on February 13th, we received an order of show cause. So this, as you can see, is the most important to the COS Board of Trustees and the entire college community. And as a result of this action, or the binding of the ACCJC, the Superintendent President acted, put together an accreditation response plan. The plan includes several areas. One is a accreditation response task force, the RTF, the Accreditation Community Advisory Committee, and some use of technical and consultant expertise in our efforts to address the show cause order. The purpose, goals, tasks, initial membership, and meeting schedules for the response task force in ACAC are enclosed. And there's a recommended option. A resolution for this item is listed on the agenda under Action for Boy Consideration. The second page that you have is an overview of the response task force. It's operating under the authority of the president as of, and on your authority through the superintendent as the board designee. The responsibility is to address the recommendations in the show cause order and to make sure that we're in full compliance with the ACCJC requirements of October 15th. This one includes weekly, because we've just completed our third meeting, to monitor our tasks, timelines, and implementation progress. And again, meeting notes are on our website and then you've been getting the regular COS E-news updates about the accreditation progress. The RTF works and delegates subgroups to the full RTF, so there are five, or four, five subgroups that are working to address the issues. Public reports will be made to the Board of Trustees and our Public Information Office is giving regular reports through publication entitled COS 2.0, The Future Is New. On your next page, you can see the list of the task force appointees. There are 40 appointees from faculty, staff, management, and students. And so that's the rest of the 40. I'm not going to go through all the names, but you can see it's probably.
Were they appointees or volunteers?
Appointees from the president, but it's voluntary. So they were asked to participate based on the recommendation for the appointment by the president and they volunteered to participate.
So they had the right to say no?
They did. And a couple of people did say no because of time conflicts or class conflicts, things like that. So there were a couple of people that weren't able to participate. But those people are actually participating through subcommittees, those that were asked. They're all still participating through subcommittee participation. On the next page, you can see there are, is a list of the subcommittees. There's standard one on institutional funding and effectiveness, and there are six committee members. Standard 2A, there are 11 committee members on the subcommittee, which is on student learning outcomes. Standard 2BNC is on student support services and service area outcomes. There are 10 committee members. Standard 3 is on resources and there are six committee members. Standard 4 on the next page is on leadership and governance, and there are seven committee members. And then we are also, as part of the show cause order, required to put together a report of closure. So how, what our plan is to close the college if we are unable to meet all the requirements. That being said, we are fully confident that we will be able to meet all of the requirements and that we will not close, that we are required to put that together. And Stan, Superintendent Kara Sosa, excuse me, Vice President Calvin are putting that closure report together. The next page discusses our community advisory committee. It's the COS Accreditation Community Advisory Committee, ACAC. And they're a group of community members from the three areas, Hamford, Tulare, and Visalia, that were also asked to participate by the president. They had their first meeting two Fridays ago. And we had about 25 community members show up. It was a very productive meeting, lots of good questions. And they've agreed to be our, basically, our eyes and ears in the community as well as to oversee some of the work that we're doing here. And they're committed that COS has not been closed and we will be able to solve these issues. So they are also going to be putting together a summary that will be part of our report that we give to ACCJC in October. So they'll be keeping notes and minutes on all of their work and then put their opinion there right up into the, to the report that we do. On the next page, you can see the groups from the different areas. So we have 13 members from the Visalia area, nine from the Hamford Corcoran area, and six from the Tulare area who have agreed to participate in the community advisory committee. The next couple of pages are, is an outline of our meeting schedule, or four pages. And basically, it shows that the RTF, the Response Task Force, meets every week. That's followed by a COS E-news. They reported out at College Council, reported out at Academic Senate. And then every other week, the Community Advisory Committee meets. So you can see all of that in the schedule. In addition, our Community Advisory Committee has been invited to participate in any of the subgroups that they'd like to participate in. And we set them information about when and where those subgroups meet. And so if they want to come in and check in on progress, they're able to do that. So that's the basic overview about where we are. In addition, as mentioned on the front page, we have contracted with two consultants who will be coming in. One is Dr. Eva Conrad, and she's an expert on funding and decision-making processes. She's worked with other colleges who have been on sanctions from the ACCJC and she works very closely with them. And the second one is Dr. Bob Pacheco, and he is an expert in student learning outcomes. He is at the, excuse me, Dr. Conrad is from the College Brain Trust. She's a former president of a college and for many years worked in the community college system and now works as a consultant through the College Brain Trust. Dr. Pacheco is the researcher, director of research at Mariposa College. And he has also worked with several colleges on their SLO issues and making sure they're in alignment with what the recommendations are or the requirements are from ACCJC. And he also came highly recommended from a number of colleges as well as the ACCJC for the work that he's done with them. They both, Dr. Conrad will be here this week and Dr. Pacheco already had his first inter-met meeting with his team on Friday. He is in Los Angeles and so we were able to do an inter-met communication with him. So we have those two people coming in. And in addition, we will be, several of us will be taking a visit to Mariposa College on Wednesday to meet with their president, Academic Senate president, and their marketing people and their vice president and their accreditation liaison officer to talk about the steps they took to successfully move off of show cause. And in addition, Stan, Superintendent Kara Sosa and I have had a chance to have a conference call with Dr. Barbara Beeno and Dr. Susan Clifford from the ACCJC. Dr. Beeno is our direct contact that Superintendent Kara Sosa and myself as the ALO, we have an opportunity to speak with her. We will be meeting regularly with them via phone and in person when we can. So those, that's the general overview of where we are. We can work at great for her. We have an incredible group of faculty, staff, and students who are committed to making sure that we address all of the requirements from the report and to make sure that the college stays open.
Mr. Sherrin?
My understanding that one of the consultants helped us to get through their attributes.
Yes, Dr. Conrad was their consultant and she came highly recommended from, by them. But she also has worked with several other colleges that were on sanctions, but highly recommended by them staff.
Jennifer, I'm sure that as a team, all of you have certain, and of course with Stan's guidance, you have your targets that you want to meet and you're going to measure your progress. But is it going to be the consultants that we bring in that are going to be more barter? She offered advice to make sure that we're moving that way and we'll have time to meet the goals that they require of us by the targeting?
Yes, at the beginning, in fact, at the beginning of our conversation with Dr. Beeno, Stan, Superintendent Kara Sosa, gave her a 15-minute overview of every single step that we were working on. He talked about everything that I just spoke to you about and all of the work that the subcommittees have been doing and as well as the consultants. And she was very positive, confident that we were moving in the right direction, agreed to do at least a monthly conference call with both of us and so we can give her regular progress updates and she can give us feedback to make sure we're moving in the right direction. And she was very amenable to that. In addition, both of the consultants have been through this process with colleges and so they'll keep us on track. Dr. Conrad specifically on the planning and decision-making and Dr. Pacheco specifically on the student learning outcomes.
I guess my, yeah, my only concern is sometimes we tend to have different markers than those that are actually doing the accrediting and I guess I would want to miss the target. But I'm kind of, the consultants are being invited to, obviously, to do it. I guess in respect to ensure that our target, if we're moving towards it or if we get off of it, there's something there.
And we do, each of the subcommittees are developing timelines. And so they'll be, when they're here this week, they'll be able to look at the timeline to make sure that we are be able to get everything done in the next, well, really, we're looking at June for our timeline. Everything needs to be done by June because then we have summer break. And when we get back, we have to be implementing everything. So in the fall, it will be full implementation. But all of our plans, all of our work really needs to be done by June. We'll spend summer writing, editing, drafting, and then be ready to implement, full implementation, training, workshops in the fall. And we'll have the, just for clarification, the report will be due in October and, which means it needs to come to Senate, College Council, the Board in September. And so we, we're talking, everything needs to be done by August and then we'll have a visit in November. It will go to the ACCJC meeting, January 14th, and we will get our, find our results of that in February 14th.
Any other questions?
Jennifer, regarding the Community Advisory Committee, I was just wondering if you've got any sort of feeling from their, from their questions or comments as to what they thought about this process or, for lack of a better term, the mess we got ourselves into? Whether they were upset at us, whether they were there to help, or just their kind of feeling in general?
I actually, they asked really, really good questions. They were very, you can tell the group of people that were there were very familiar with the college and they asked very similar questions to those that our faculty and staff and people here at COS asked. They questioned, how did this happen? And so we were, you know, Superintendent Kara Sosa was able to explain the process of accreditation over the past six years and why we went from being off-learning to show cause. They asked questions about how we're going to resolve the issues and we were able to share all of the details that we've shared with you tonight. They, they asked, of course, you know, what happens to students' transcripts and these kinds of things? What's our communication plan at the high schools? So Superintendent Kara Sosa has actually worked with our students' services staff as well as Unified School District. And he is meeting with every single high school in all of our feeder areas with their faculty and their counselors. And he's already done probably about 10 of them. He had two today. And he's met with, he's meeting with every single high school. So that was one of their questions. I can't think of the other questions.
I think their general feeling, board member willingness, is that they were there out of support for the college, care and genuine concern for the college. I really didn't get a sense of anger or frustration. They're a combination of public and private sector folks and they understand processes and accreditations. And they were just anxious to help, wanting to know that we had a plan in place and how they could help with that plan. So I think they'll do a dual role. They'll serve as that eyes and ears from our community to come in and watch us and monitor and support us. But they'll also serve as our advocates out in the community because they'll have a firsthand understanding of what we're doing to address the issues and they'll be able to speak about those publicly with confidence.
So again, there's a resolution coming up later on the agenda that will address the issues. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Board?
Yes.
I would be interested as to whether you or the audience...
I would be interested as to whether you or the audience were warm up here.
I was a little warm when I came in. Are you warm now?
Cold.
Now I'm freezing. My clothes are not so...
I'm silly.
I don't want to be wet. But I'm kind of cold.
That's why he thought I was making a comment about this. And I said it's cold in here, and then it's...
Okay, yeah, it wasn't.
It wasn't, yeah.
Mr. Charisosa, your...
I just have one quick announcement, and then I'm going to defer my time tonight so that we can get back into our cycle of introductions of new division chairs and a chance to have a report from one of our division chairs, which I think is something we would all be interested to hear tonight. Before I do though, on the heels of Dr. Acerna's update on accreditation, I did want to remind the Board that we've been circulating among you a local workshop conference opportunity that's coming available to us as board members and CEO. It's a workshop sponsored in part by the state and the regional C6 consortium, some of the federal funding that's come into the area to provide training and staff development for board members and CEOs. And this particular workshop is titled, "Student Success and the Importance of the Student Success Act." And there's some strands in this workshop that are for board members and CEOs to understand accreditation and the details associated with it. It's April 12th and 13th, which is a Friday and Saturday. And we've sent you all that information. It's the one hosted hearing, Queens County, out at Harris Ranch. And I just wanted to remind all of you that that opportunity is there for us. I think it's a good opportunity because it targets something that's specific to our college right now. And it's local, and it doesn't involve additional travel and lodging costs and that kind of thing. So I wanted to make sure that you had that information. And if you needed details on that, contact either myself or Janet, and we can continue to help. And then with that tonight, I'd like to defer the rest of my time. And I think, am I introducing the Vice President? Or am I introducing our Dean? To introduce our Division Chair? Stephanie's here.
I can introduce him.
Our interim?
No, he's not invited.
Doctor Detzer's not even... Jennifer, will you take the introduction for us?
So as in our past practice, we have... When our Division Chairs are coming in, they have an opportunity to present to the Board. And Jared Birch from the Math and Engineering Department has been selected Chair for that Division. He will be coming in in the fall to begin his Division Chair appointment. So no further review. I'll let him go first. Thank you, Jared.
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Jared Birch, and I am the newly elected Division Chair for Math and Engineering. I just thought I would maybe share a little background about who I am and maybe what my goals are as Division Chair. I'm not from California. I actually grew up on the northern lakes of Minnesota. After graduating there, I got a bachelor's degree at Southern University in Mathematics, then went up to U.S.A. and received a master's in statistics. I'm the only one with a stats degree in my department. So I get a lot of stats classes. I enjoy teaching those. But it was really at graduate school that I found that where I wanted to be was in a classroom. And in fact, I won the Graduate Instructor of the Year for not just the math department there, but for the college of science. That kind of propelled me along. And I started seeking out that what I wanted to be was an instructor. And I was hired straight out of grad school here at COS in 1998. I know I don't look it, but... I've been here 15 years. And I've served on various committees. Started out serving on a study abroad committee and kind of opened my eyes to how committees and that sort work. And in 2006, I started on the Student Learning Outcomes Committee and kind of got sidetracked. My daughter had a diagnosis of a malignant brain tumor. And so I kind of stepped back from some committee work at that point. But got back into it and worked on the... And still working on the Distance Education Committee and enjoy that. And currently on Response Task Force, one of the appointees. And working on the outcomes assessment end of that as part of that subgroup. And just really enjoy what I do. I love my profession. I consider it my craft. I spend a lot of time thinking about how I can effectively teach the different students that we have and try to continuously improve what I do. When Chris Keen decided to step down and not be Division Chair anymore, it seemed like I had a lot of people keep coming to my office saying they'd like me to do it. So that's why I'm here, I guess. I appreciate their support and their trust in me. And you know, my main goal, I think, at this juncture is accreditation, to be perfectly honest. We've got a lot of work to do. And I know that with the quality of individuals that I have in my division, and many hands will make like work, and we'll go for it, we'll get it done, and make sure that we take care of the things that need to be taken care of in our division. And we have hiring going on. I'm hiring a couple of positions, and I'll have to work with that and do some training and help those new faculty members get acclimated. And of course, the year I come in, it's comprehensive program to do, so... I think I'll have plenty to say. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jared. I was going to ask what your goal is for them. I almost thought that would seem like a silly question after we finish speaking, but then you addressed it right at the end. Do any other board members have any questions of Jared?
So Jared, it sounds like you went from being the what? A golden Gopher to an Aggie?
Yep, that's right. Yeah, exactly.
Big Ten to the...
I want to ask you about your daughter, if that's appropriate.
Oh, yeah. She's doing fantastic. She's a junior now in high school, doing very, very well. But you know, it's been a long journey. We took her to St. Jude's Research Hospital in Memphis, Tennessee, and got her there. Eight months of radiation, chemotherapy, lose the hair, lose 20% of her body weight.
I went through that in my life with my son, so I didn't want you to talk about it.
I appreciate that. Yeah, it was a difficult time, but she's doing great.
Thank you, Jared. I love that you worked it out.
Lori, I'd like to congratulate you because many of you who are for us aren't quite sure why they want to do it. You know why. And I'm glad that's why you want to do it.
Thank you. Good talking to you. As board members, we really do appreciate you taking the time to come to the Board. And we get to see a face with a name and listen to your goals, especially with all of the colleges going through. We appreciate your time. You took to come here tonight. Academic Senate report. Michelle?
Well, this is... It's already been an emotional board meeting, but I'm hoping that you will indulge me with a brief moment of silence. I don't even know if I can say this. Woody Childs, who died here from 1972 to 2001, died last week. He was a great teacher. Thank you. Well, on the note of the Senate and its work on accreditation, as usual, we've decided to take on the hardest parts of the campus climate. We're working on an APDT, which will have its first reading next week regarding student learning outcomes. We will probably be meeting twice as often as we normally do so that we'll have eight meetings before the summer. Tonight, I'm really here, though, to read some resolutions that were begun prior to the accreditation findings. And I'd like to start by reading the conclusion from the accreditation report regarding student services. As you can see, there's quite a few people in the audience tonight representing student services. And this is from page 29 of the evaluation. "The visiting team confirmed that COS Student Services enhanced student learning by creating and maintaining a supportive learning environment. Students acknowledged repeatedly that the services they received were useful, and the faculty and staff within student services were friendly and helpful. COS has a well-established and proficient program review process for student services. However, the college should strengthen its student services by further evaluating the effectiveness of its programs for all students at all locations." And I read that only to say that really, student services is doing an outstanding job. And that is not the reason why I'm here tonight to in any way criticize what's going on there, but rather to suggest that a couple of things would make it even better. You received these resolutions in your email, and the entire school also received them. I'm sorry to say I didn't bring copies with me. There are two. The first one actually regards your role as the ratifiers of the Student Services Division Chair. And so I think I'll take my time reading that one, and maybe we can discuss it. If not, then I'll go on to the second one. "Whereas the organizational structure of student services management at COS is by no means clear, simple, or uniform, nor is it comparable to the organizational structure of academic services management. And whereas the Student Services Division Chair is charged with representing 40 to 50 student services faculty, including full-time and adjunct counselors, other non-classroom positions, as well as adjunct instructors as their faculty liaison to administration. And whereas during the 2012-13 academic year, student services faculty members fall under approximately 10 different lines of report. And whereas the Student Services Administration eliminated the Student Services Division Chair position, which was only temporarily reinstated for one semester. And whereas all members of the Student Services Division need faculty leadership and representation in order to function as a division, especially in the areas of budget, expansion of counseling services on multiple campuses, program review, student learning outcomes, and more. Be it resolved that the Academic Senate urges the Board to reaffirm the duly-elected position of Student Services Division Chairperson. Be it further resolved that any and all duties of the Student Division Chair that are men you serve by the Student Services Administration be immediately returned to the Chair. Be it further resolved that the Academic Senate recommends a restructuring of student services management to eliminate the 10 different lines of report into a single line of report for all student services faculty and Division Chair to improve the delivery of services to students." Any questions or comments?
Questions, comments? And then wait till this second resolution's ready.
I'll have you look.
I'll leave it up to you.
They're very different. That's why I was wondering if I should stop.
I don't think that my views are different between the two. So I'm going to listen to them both.
Okay. The second one is about the role of chairs and governance. "Whereas all faculty members of the Student Services Division are entitled to the same opportunities and rights as other faculty members, including a collegial decision-making process for scheduling and other faculty issues. And whereas the Student Services current administration has enacted many significant and unilateral changes to practices that directly and negatively affect counseling faculty and services, including hindering the ability of faculty to serve on district-wide committees or participate in other professional development opportunities. And whereas these changes were not made in the spirit of participatory governance and were made without prior explanations, reasons, or discussions in the vision of counseling at COS, be it therefore resolved that the Student Services Administration will engage counselors and other student services faculty in creating mutually accepted guidelines for counseling services, which include committee participation and other professional development opportunities. Be it further resolved that the COS Academic Senate Task Force on participatory governance meet with student services and administration to help participate and resolve concerns related to the college's governance structure." John?
You were kind enough to say that these were sent to the Board in advance, so I had checks to read them. And three things, pardon me. In the last one you read, you talked about creating a mutually accepted guideline. Well, this mutually accepted issue has kind of got us where we are in that historically mutually accepted, we just never have an agreement. And therefore, there's no progress made, and everything stalled.
I don't think that's what mutually agreed upon means here.
Well, we've seen it over and over again. So we have problems...
Those are board policy issues. This is internal to them. This is like the math division has a set of guidelines that they go with.
If you're going to argue with me, I don't know what to think.
I'm sorry. I just meant mutually agreed, not in the way that we normally think about it.
Well, that's what it says. And but I also think two other things here. You know, it's appeared to me that Academic Senate and Costa, you're blending Costa's responsibilities into your actions. I think that would be kept separate. And I also think you're bypassing all the process that comes directly to the Board at this time.
You know, I took these to the President. We discussed them. We couldn't come to an understanding, and that's why they're here.
Okay.
Anything for me?
Michelle, I would just like to add on to what John said, and I guess more just where we are today with accreditation. I guess I read these resolutions, and I'll be quite honest with you. I was disheartened because I read these, and I think this is... This probably signifies the reason why we're having issues we are today with accreditation and where we are as a college. And we continue to focus on these types of things. But I understand your point in being here. I guess what disheartens me is that it's getting mixed with Costa. It's a grievance already that everybody knows about, that's public, that this is already there. And then we bring resolutions to kind of, I feel like, fuel the fire a bit. And I'm not saying that's what you meant.
No, not at all.
But I'm saying in the public eye, I think as a college and institution, we need to be careful on how we're presenting and the things we're doing so that things don't get misperceived. And I'm not saying that you're here with that focus, but as a board member, I'm just speaking personally for myself. These are disheartening, and we're in such a mode of work and getting things done. And we're asking so much of the faculty and administration here that I think we need to move forward instead of trying to move back. And I'm not saying that's what you intended, but it could be read that way with resolutions. Because this is somewhere else already, I guess, the calling time. It's already a grievance. It's been brought up. It's going for the task to make its way. As board members, that's how I'm seeing it. And I can be corrected through the process.
If it's already a grievance, then it's the Board and Academic Center dealt with it.
The grievance is really not the issue with Senate. This is about our governance. And when we look at a governance structure that has chairs for every division, and all of a sudden, we have a chair that is only on a semester-by-semester basis, that affects in a very negative way all that division. And that is really the issue... This is number six on our 10 plus 1, is we have to look at roles of faculty and governance. And when you single out a chair and say that chair does not act the same way as all the other chairs do, that becomes an issue for the Senate. And that chair was duly-elected by you all for her term. And we're concerned about what is going to happen to that chair, especially if it's just semester by semester.
Well, it is. It was restored. And to ask the Board to reaffirm anything in the future is disingenuous on our part. If we assure you that anything does stay the same, not knowing the future of budgets or number of students or number of students or anything else, you know, it's a hollow assurance. And so I can't even assure you that I'll be here next year.
And I'm sure that you are not going to, now that Jared is Chair, probably you won't turn around next week and say Jared is not Chair anymore. And I think that is what happened in counseling, and that is what has frightened people, depressed them. That's why you see the counseling staff here, because they can't count on their chair being there for more than a semester at a time.
Let me respond to that, Michelle. You've elaborated that point, I think, beyond its usefulness. Because you and I have talked about this. And I'm going to say to you what here, what I said to you, and I think you know this. And the folks who have asked, we've clarified this. When we were in the budget cut mode prior to the passage of Prop. 30, and I stood in front of the entire Senate and said this, Sandra and others were there, I've said this, we looked at if we needed to reduce costs to the extreme measures we thought we might prior to the passage of Prop. 30. We asked ourselves, what did we look like, because we're down to 8,000 FTEs, what did we look like when we were that small before? And one of the things that came up from that analysis historically is that there was a period of time when the college's FTEs were smaller, that we had fewer division chairs. We had division chairs who were either combined, or in the case of counseling, we had a division that reported directly to an administrator, they didn't have a division chair. So that's where it originated. It originated out of that budget discussion. When we moved forward, thinking we were going to be in that budget situation, it wasn't just that division, it was the first of what we thought might have to be some other consolidations. When Prop. 30 passed and we were asked to reconsider that, you came to me and I said, you're right, let's wait, let's study this a little bit more. And time was on our side then, because we did sit down after Costa filed the grievance, and we said, you know, we will put the division chair back in there. And I apologize, Ed, if this is disclosing something that was discussed in an agreement setting, but what was requested of the college at that time was, if you want us to resolve this matter at this organizational level, we need you to say that you'll never remove that division chair again. And we said, well, no, that's John's point. We can't go beyond what we can do right now, which is, let's put the division chair back in there. And we went to the division, and we went to all of you, and we said, we're going to put that division chair back in there. No one ever said for a semester at a time. Those aren't your words. They're not our words.
I believe I have a memo to that effect.
I don't, I don't, I've never seen it. I don't believe you got it from me. Okay? So what we said is, we can put the division chair back in, but you're asking us to assure that it's going to be there forever.
No, no, this is not what we're asking.
No, I know you're not. I'm talking about where it was at that time. So what I can say to you clearly now, here, and publicly, is that we've put the division chair back in place, we've told them that, and that division chair remains there until either we need some budget or other reason to decide differently, or we negotiate it differently. But that would be true of anything about the divisions or the contract right now, aside from just this issue, because there's nothing that's going to be guaranteed forever.
And that's not what I or the Senate wanted. We want all the chairs to be the same. That's all. And chairs do not serve their terms on a semester-by-semester basis. That's all.
Well, if you have something that says we're willing to put the division chair in there and review it on a semester-by-semester basis, bring it to me, because that was wording that we didn't intend to share with you to create the sense that you have, and I'm willing to rescind that language now.
Thank you. That's all we want. That is all we want.
And it is, but it is separate and aside from a number of these other things. And the only comment I want to make, because I know we want to move on to some other stuff, but this is important. These were drafted, and they were passed by Senate, but they also were not, there wasn't an activity, I don't believe, on Senate's part to talk to all parties involved. This was really just hearing from your faculty members in this division. So you espouse some things here as though they may be 100% true, when you didn't actually assess that by talking to administrators in the division, by talking to senior management about this issue. You created these resolutions based on one side of information.
Because we are the faculty voice.
Perfect. But I just want to provide that clarification here for the public and everybody who's listening. These are in a limited context. It's a faculty voice, but they can't stand those documents to be publicly true, because they weren't completed, asking all parties involved.
Resolutions are recommendations, only like that.
Right. Now, if you want us to take your recommendations in future seriously, then they need to be vetted. If it's just back in the point of view, we'll look at it that way. Which do you want? You want us to...
I don't think there's anything in here that is not true. Let me put it that way.
Well, you put it that way.
Now, there are some perspectives that could be different.
Exactly. I use the word vetted, okay? But this is neither right or wrong. I mean, if you don't mind, if you didn't vet it. And that's perfectly all right. If that's the way it is, well, then we'll consider these things unvetted and put however much value on it accordingly. If they're vetted, we're obligated to put more value on it. So however you want to do it, however you want to do these things in the future is up to you.
I understand.
What do you mean by that?
Go out, when you go out in the world and find out if it's all true or not.
So informed, basically.
Pardon me? Yeah, you know.
Verify.
You verify by talking to others, research, maybe talking to you, maybe talking to others, maybe, I don't know what, it depends on what it is you're claiming. It's like a newspaper reporter. If a newspaper reporter, which they do too often nowadays, just goes and talks to one person, then the story reads one way. If you talk to both, to more than one piece, then the story becomes more useful. And you have greater, you feel greater confidence in the reporter's point of view. That doesn't mean the reporter don't get to do that, but if they do do it, you pay more attention to them.
I just want to say, you worked on these for close to a month. They were very different when we started out. And believe me, this, this I believe to be 100% true, that there are no internal governing rules in counseling, that there is a confusion about who reports to who, that the chair doesn't understand if she is going to be here for more than a semester at a time. All of those things I believe to be are true. Now, the one area where I will admit, there's probably a perception issue is on the role that the chair has as far as their budget, their expansion of services, but those are things that all the chairs have promised to do contractually. So what happens there is that the contract has 28 different things that the chair must do. The chair in counseling does not do all of those 28 things, and that's what I'm reporting to you. Not to make any political hay out of this, just to tell you that that is, that is what is happening.
Well, okay, so just for clarification, Stan, could you just help me out? You're saying this is very different than the grievance. I'm thinking this is kind of the same issue. Can you clarify for me?
Well, the issue that's in grievance is about the role and responsibility of the division chair, the appointment, or the decision that the district made about the division chair, which we in the grievance remediation clarified that we were going to restore the division chair. We weren't going to make that elimination. It wasn't, it never went into effect. It was to go into effect, and then we decided before it went into effect.
And I'm just going to say, as a faculty member, I don't have any idea of what is in the grievance. I mean, that is not something that is public knowledge.
Right, right.
This is public knowledge.
Yeah, the grievance log is out there. That's pretty easy for everybody to look at. They're not secret.
I don't know what happened when they got together. That is something that, so this is completely different than that in my mind. And now, if they have places where they don't tell, that was certainly unintentional.
Any further questions? Okay, thank you, Michelle. Costa, President's Report.
Good evening, everybody. I want to share this preamble with everybody. Thanks, Woody. Anyway, we miss him. Now to business. College of Sequoia's Teachers Association is committed to achieving full accreditation. In everyone's interest to do so, our leadership pledges cooperation and support as a means to achieve this outcome. We feel it can be accomplished without altering the integrity of the master agreement. Cooperation and compliance are not mutually exclusive. Additionally, the association also continues to stand willing to meet with the district at any time to discuss resolution to a number of issues, including grievances. The grievances, you must understand, were filed because of district contract violations and the district's recalcitrance to enter meaningful discussion to arrive at mutually beneficial solutions. As a matter of fact, the continuing chorus is, file the grievance if you, Costa, don't like what we're doing. And so we have no other outcome. We do have to file the grievances, because we cannot arrive at solutions by discussion. Achieving resolution would no doubt improve campus climate. We will continue to await the district's call. Also want to make you aware, if you're not, the recent grievance was filed about summer school scheduling and other summer school problems, and a discussion with no resolution took place today. So, but the grievance is filed. Another grievance involving the contracting out of unit members' work will be filed shortly. And this is the one involving BICs and other contractors. And again, subcontracting out members' work is not legal. For today's, and I'm going to have to be going here because my students are waiting, but we also respectfully today to request that AP 3280 about the grants be pulled from the agenda, as there is an ongoing arbitration in progress for this. It would be much more helpful to wait until a decision is published, and so we request that. Heard some of the conversations here about communications, and, okay, what? I've been part of those miscommunications. Mr. Carazosa appointed the Costa member to the task force without consulting, the member without consulting us. He looked at the list, and there was a name as Costa representative. And obviously, that's not a very civil or respectful thing to do. It got compounded with Mr. Carazosa's note under the Costa heading after the first meeting, because the absence of that member who had not been informed of being on the committee at that time was that hopefully the Costa representative will be there next time. And so, again, to me, that's not very civil. So if we want to have a piece of dialogue that embodies the culture of respect, civility, and trust, which is part of the show cause language, then there needs to be some work done. And with that, I'm finished. Any questions?
I have one, Ed.
Yes.
You did see the follow-up email from Steve clarifying where I had in fact invited him early.
I did, but he wasn't available. He did not get it until after the first meeting. And that's something, because I talked to him on the Monday after the first meeting.
But your implication with the comment you made right there is that I knew that, and I didn't, correct?
Well, I don't know what you know. We didn't know any of it until we saw the name.
Well, yeah, we weren't going to request, we weren't going to request from you for participation members, but we had invited your member to consider being participated at the same time with everybody else.
The name Costa appeared behind the members' name. I'm not going to get into an argument with yours.
Yeah, no worries.
I've got to, I've got to get, I know that you have the talent for twisting things to your point of view, which is great. I bow down to you for that, because I wish I had that ability. I don't.
You do pretty good.
I'm straightforward in most of it.
Yeah, at least in your mind. Okay, good night.
Anyway, thank you for the time. And I think Lisa will be here if you have any questions on the AP.
Great.
But basically, if you could pull that until the arbitration is settled, we'd appreciate it. Thank you. We've got a lot of work to do.
CSEA Report.
First, I would like to say, for those of you out there, I know that nobody, besides being an incredible teacher and an incredible person, I have a pleasure when you decide to do a great play, Master Helen Boyd, do it in our theater, to view that. And I have a whole new, I deemed a whole new respect for him, man himself. He was an incredible individual. And I know every student, every student in his class he touched in one way or another. It is a great loss for this college. Great, great, great man. At last week's study session, you voted to not renew the lease on the CDC, and of course, that raised a whole mess of questions from everybody. I've had hundreds of phone calls about it, I mean, from staff, non-staff, whatever else. And some of the questions have to do with the budget. They don't understand the budget, they doesn't agree with their figures, so I'm going to be sending a meeting between Brent and myself and the staff. I'll be meeting with the staff next week, and they have, of course, they have a lot of ideas, so we'll be following up on that. The other thing I'd like to address is item number nine. I have a dress rehearsal planned for now. We open Jekyll and Hyde this Friday. Hope to see you there. Let's equalize at Jekyll and Hyde. On item number nine, it is CSEA's Sunshine Agreement. The vote was just taken by the negotiating team on Friday, and as per the contract that we agreed to last time, we have the salaries and benefits as two reopeners, automatic and one other if we decided to. The vote was taken, and the negotiating team agreed that we wanted to reopen the two reopeners of salary and benefits, and that we would not be reopening any other articles, just so you know, because I have to leave, and I informed John that once I found out. So when you get title number nine, CSE will just be reopening our two reopeners. Well, that's it. Thank you.
Good luck with the fight.
Thank you.
Three things. First of all, I thank Chandler, one of our members, Amy, who always runs the Federation Task Force. She's on the SLO subcommittee, and I talked to her, and she's fired. I'm excited about the challenge. Second of all, we look forward to our negotiations, which began on a personal, and I thank John, who's always very important professional in the work of the details about setting up your negotiations. So I will be here later when item seven comes up to the public hearing, if I don't have any further statement, I think, or memo sticks, which I'll... And third thing, I want to tell you how we, as PASA, I had to look at the big frame around the negotiations. COS has been through a lot in the past couple of years. We have a new challenge with accreditation. The last couple of years, we've really faced and are grappling with two others. One is the reduction from the 10,000 FTE college to 8,000, which requires all sorts of adjustments. The other challenge, of course, is to start the new programs in Hanford and Flare, the centers there. And PASA has been a big part, both of those, in some ways, that have been a little bit negative for our members, but we've been a part of both staff and centers, having to reduce the number of classes. So we want to continue the negotiations in the spirit that we've been helpful in meeting some of the challenges that the college has faced in the next three years. Any other questions?
I appreciate your comments.
Other questions?
General obligation bonds. These are announcements only next of the meeting for the La Cien area measure I, which is ten, vice thirty, and measure J, September ninth in Flare. No information on the rights, is that it? Just how they meditate?
Correct.
And next, we want information items, discussion items, first reading.
We've got a series of folks chipping in a little bit on the board policy. We just want to touch base on each one and go for you quickly, so we could go to that included, start working through these. Policy 2410 is actually back before you now, and you can see what's new is emboldened, what's stricken through is proposed for revision or elimination. And it was an attempt on our part to realign this policy, 2410, with what we actually worked through at the start of the year through the College Council to kind of try to describe the flow of how a board policy and an administrative procedure is actually proposed, reviewed, and adopted. So there's a flow chart in our BPA And it was an attempt on our part to realign this policy, 2410, with what we actually worked through at the start of the year through the college council to kind of try to describe the flow of how a board policy and an administrative procedure is actually proposed, reviewed, and adopted. So there's a flow chart in our BPA P that matches this. And in addition to cleaning up some language to put in the abbreviations and change out titles of some things that were in place, like the cabinet, to what's now in place, like the senior management group. The rest of it really starts on number three down below of page one. And it talks about how the process begins with a board policy or a VP or an AP in question being brought first to senior management. From there, senior management sends that out to all constituents across the college campus. And it begins with a 30-day review period. We picked the 30-day review period because previously there was no time constraint on how this worked. It could go out for a smaller amount of time, it could go out for a longer amount of time. Some made it back, some didn't make it back. They weren't always tracked as closely as we would like. So this 30-day review period allows for most of campus constituent groups to meet at least twice, because normally they meet two times a month. And then they would have an opportunity to submit responses with any proposed revisions, changes, suggestions, back to senior management. Senior management would make a second review of that, and if necessary, send it out for an additional review. If an entity needed more time because they wanted to convene a subcommittee or something, they could request that. And we've had that happen, and we've been able to grant that. But then finally, from that process, they would go from senior management, after having gone out to constituency groups, committees, academic senate, and so forth, coming back, and then finally going to college council. And when they hit college council, they would go for a two-reading cycle, which is again about one month. So in a, in a good pattern of not too much controversy and things that are fairly easy to review, revise, and change, 60 to 90 days, you could have policy revisions before the board for, for consideration and action. And this puts in place what we've been practicing the second half of this year, which is why you've seen more board policies coming before you like you are now.
Do you have any, is there any, have all those evolved, brought into this as being appropriate procedure?
Yeah, I don't think on this particular sequencing. Well, we actually spent a lot of time on, John, was looking, building a flow chart to try to describe what we were doing. And once we got that organized and everybody agreed that this is how it works, we actually came back and put these steps in place to match that chart. So with regard to initiating policy and bringing policy through the system to the board for approval, this has everyone's agreement, particularly with the opportunity to request more time or longer periods of time if necessary, and for those to be granted. What it puts in place that had never been there before, though, was a 30-day period to start, and then expecting more time after that, as opposed to it being undefined before.
Like a doing to the review?
They have.
So it was that, huh?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna dream about that.
Hey, cool.
And that one's 3280?
Yes, this is 3280, and I want to declare, based on the comments from Ed, this, I am not aware of any grievance that's about grants, which is what this is, an academic procedure for how you apply for a grant. And second, they did go through the process that Stan, the superintendent Carrazosa, just spoke of. And so it was out for 30-day review by all constituencies with a chance to give feedback, and went through all the processes thereafter through college council, which Costa and senate and everybody else has a chance to give feedback on.
So until today, you hadn't heard anything?
Well, actually, just, not to defend Ed, but I think what he did, and Lisa, you tell me if this is what he's referring to. The grievance that's pending is under reassigned time?
Yes.
And there's a provision under reassigned time where reassigned time can be awarded for a faculty member who's given a grant. But that's actually in reassigned time. It's not the process for applying for a grant. So you might want to tell Ed it's just separate from what this policy is.
If I may, I think part of the specific concern was you were going to strike through language. And again, Ed took all of the data with him, but if I remember correctly, the language about following the master agreement and any MOUs, as well as any side letters that have been identified, I think specific to wage. I can't, I don't know exactly what your language is, but I know that's still a concern.
It's right there, yeah. And as Jennifer said, we did review all of that, but because those, I think our rationale in looking at board policies and administrative procedures is because those things are spelled out in the collective bargaining agreement, it's redundant to have them again in an administrative procedure and a board policy.
What if the board?
If there's no grievance on this policy.
Well, if the board chooses to go forward, this is the first reading. Costa has a little shot at the second reading.
They would.
So the language that is crossed out in the first paragraph, that was language that during the 30-day review, Costa asked to be added. That's all three of the parts that are crossed out. And, well, actually, the two red parts that are crossed out was language that Costa wanted to add. Are you guys going to get it in color? Okay, so let me read it, sorry. The part that says in bold, "All grant proposals will conform with faculty and staff hours, wages, and working conditions as specified in the appropriate master agreements, memorandum of understanding, side letters, and other accords," in the first paragraph. And in the one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph, where it says verifying the grant conformance to faculty and staff hours, wages, and working conditions as specified in the appropriate master agreements, memorandum of understanding, side letters, and other accords. Both of those were, that was language Costa asked to be added. We met and senior management discussed that, and we thought, we are, belief is that that is covered in the contract. And so, again, as Superintendent Carrazosa said, it didn't need to be in a procedure for applying for the grant.
Okay, put words in, rather than the bold is what Costa recommended.
Yep.
And the matrix crossed it out. And the other paragraph is not bold, was existing language.
That was existing language that we also took out based on that conversation.
Right. So I think, I do think that's a good clarification, though, because when this policy revision started, there was, where you see bold and, and strike through, there was no language. So it could have been brought to you without that at all, had we chose to revise it that way at senior management. But what this shows you is what Costa requested be added with the bold and the strike through. We're just showing you that they requested that be added, and we deleted that. We're not making that recommendation because it's covered in the master agreement.
It's what it's here, that's being taken out as well.
Yes.
That one, yeah.
And this, you're just talking about the process for?
Applying for a grant. So getting, getting approval to apply for a grant. So if you want to apply for a grant, if you become aware of a grant, you want to apply for a grant, you follow this procedure. There's a one-page form you fill out, you turn it in to your appropriate supervisor, who then gets approval at senior management for it. So it's solely talking about the process for applying for a grant. And again, any things in the master contract would be followed with that during that process.
Okay, thank you.
I have the next two. I have a new legally required new policy, 3440, which talks about service animals. This policy was created to comply with recent changes in federal law. Community colleges are required to put service animals to include a miniature pony on the campus. The policy will also be applicable to individuals who are also training service animals, which we have seen on our.
I haven't seen that.
The second one that I have, for your review, is administrative policy 3560, which reflects amendments to the Business and Professional Code regarding alcohol beverages on our campus. And basically, that first paragraph in bold is the, the additional text, and really cites that campus police has primary responsibility of enforcing the alcohol laws on the campus.
I'm back. So 4020 is on program treatment and course development and application of those continuants. This is additional language requested by the community college of legal and common. You can see the new language in bold on the third paragraph, all new and modified courses, modified courses programs, and the new language, deleted courses and programs should be approved by the board. In the last paragraph on the front page, all of that is new language required by, by law. Go to the back page, everything on the back page is new language, which is required by law. And again, you don't have the part in red, but where you see in the second paragraph on the back and the third paragraph on the back, "In consultation with the academic senate," is actually in red, and that's additional language that senate asked to be added that we included. So we're trying to show you what additional language we added based on senate's recommendation.
Where's that?
In the sec, on, where it says, on the second page, credit hour, second paragraph, it says, "A superintendent president in consultation with the academic senate."
Oh, yeah, it is a little bit covered here.
Yeah, that's, that was added in the next paragraph, beginning, "The superintendent president in consultation with the academic senate." And below that, three lines below that, "Superintendent president in consultation with academic senate." That was their language that we, we added. So that's an overview of that one. Any questions on that one? Okay, the next one, 4105, which is distance ed and distance education student authentication process. Again, this is a revise by the community college of legal and common. And then there's also in red, is the Subcommittee of Academic Senate on Distance Education added a large number of language to this because of new policies and procedures that are required by the state as well, as well as processes that they've gone through. So everything that's underlined on page one, under B2 and B3, is new language by the law. Under B4, that is all new language, but it also was approved by the Distance Education at COS committee and the academic senate. On page three, again, this is law under D, and under E, oh, in starting, in the second paragraph under D, is language from academic senate and their subcommittee on distance education. And letter E is added language from academic senate and their distance education committee. Questions on that one? There's a lot of laws and regulations on distance education. We try to get them all in one. 4106, awarding of certificates. There's only one addition here, and this is how we revised it to match new certificate forms that we have. And the only exception, this is about who is going to print and award the certificates. The exception is for certain state requirements, police, fire, and LA health. They have specific certificates that they must provide, and so it's different than our format, so they'll print them with their self-sets. And then on the back, is how, under D, is how, who signs off on them. Any questions?
I was wondering when Michelle has time to teach?
Eight to 12.
Okay. Were there any questions on any of those board policies? Solicited to Caesar? Thank you, Francis. Thank you, Jennifer.
We have to work with more of the second reading.
Information only, right?
Yes, for, for a first reading, they come here for information, they'll be back for a second reading now, as an automatic follow-up to this, and we'll take action on that second reading.
We don't have to go through them all over again?
Correct.
Well, we do or we don't?
We don't.
I'll just say that I, I, for one, when this stuff comes up, I don't hold out. I think these are quite acceptable. Even, even Michelle, I'm doing.
Even though we can't see the red, just so you know. We can't see this at all. Okay, the next item on the agenda is our consent calendar. All items listed on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. An item may be removed from the consent calendar, a request of any member of the board, trustees, or any person in the audience, and considered as a separate agenda item. Does anybody have any items to be removed from our consent calendar? We have our minutes of our previous meetings and lay sessions. Of course, no before payment bills, the working budget, and the summer school health fee to labor.
Not moved, we approve the consent calendar. Second.
It's been moved in second. All of the favors approved in the consent calendar are certified by saying aye.
Aye.
Question carries. First item of action this evening is our public hearing on the district and Casafa's initial collective bargaining proposal for a successor contract.
Evening. The master agreement between the district and Casafa is set to expire on June 30th of 2013. In anticipation of the expiration of the master agreement, both sides came to the February 11th board meeting with sunshine proposals. This began first step in negotiating the process. Since the February 11th board meeting, both those proposals have been available, available for public review in the Office of HR. It's been over 30 days now, and tonight, I'd like to have a public hearing held, which will allow the public an opportunity to comment on both the district's and Casafa's sunshine proposals.
Okay, public comment. Any public comments? Seeing none, propose public hearing.
The next action would be that the board acknowledge that both the districts and Casafa's sunshine proposals did go through the process, and we are now available to start negotiating.
So can we board comments? Can I get a motion to accept?
So moved.
I'll say it.
It's been moved in second. All of the favor of accepting the successor contract from Casafa, certified by saying aye.
Aye.
Question carries. I vote. Number eight, our public hearing for CMT.
In a similar scenario, back in October of 2012, the district and CSCE agreed to a three-year contract. However, one of the provisions of that three-year agreement was that both sides would be able to sunshine two items, well, three items during the spring semester of 2013. At the February board meeting, the district sunshine salary and benefits in one article, that one article being transfers, transfer language within the CSCE master agreement. For the last 30 days, the district sunshine proposal has been available for public review in the Office of Human Resources. And at this time, I would begin, ask the board, hold a public hearing on the district's sunshine proposal with regards to reopeners with the CSCE master agreement.
Public hearing, do we have any public comments on the district's reopeners collective bargaining proposal to CSCE? Seeing none, propose public hearing. Do we have any board comments, or can I get a motion to accept the proposal?
So moved. Second.
Second, all of the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Question carries, I vote. Thank you, John. Number nine, presentation of CSCE reopeners bargaining proposals.
I've done it, we have.
I'm not.
Steve Lamar mentioned, he's the CSCE president earlier, that the CSCE bargaining unit did elect to open up two items for reopeners this spring semester. Those items indicated were salary and benefit. However, according to Steve, the bargaining unit opted not to open up an article that they were entitled to open up. So I do not have anything in writing. I will get something from Steve tomorrow, which indicates they desire to open up salary and benefited, benefits. But in anticipation of this coming to my office, I would ask that the board acknowledge receipt of Steve's statement that he intends to provide a sunshine proposal to the district, and also announce that that sunshine proposal, when it is received, will be found within the Office of Human Resources from eight to five, Monday through Friday, for the public opportunity to review it. And finally, I wish the board would announce that there will be a public hearing on CSCE's reopeners sunshine proposal at the April 8th board meeting.
Do I have a motion to accept? Are any board comments or questions of John? Do we have a motion to accept the reopeners bargaining proposal?
So moved, including the recommended additions, terms of branch. I'll say it.
It's been moved in second. All of the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Question carries. Are we done with you, John?
Yes.
Our next item is the roll call vote on COS's 2015 accreditation response plan, which I know we already covered. Was that basically your report, Jennifer? Okay, we have a motion to accept our accreditation response plan, resolution 2015 dash zero four.
So moved.
It's been seconded. Any comments? Roll call, please, call board.
Trustee Zuma.
Yes.
Trustee Man.
Aye.
Trustee Unis.
Aye.
Trustee Sherman.
Aye.
Trustee Carnoza.
Aye.
I vote, question carries.
Trusty Mann. Trusty Nunes.
Aye.
Trusty Sherman.
Aye.
Trusty Cardoza.
I vote. Question carries.
Yes, you're not done with me yet.
Our next item of action is curriculum.
As we do on a monthly basis, and for many would decrease in the report for this, this month, all of them basically are for the issues we've talked about in the past that are removing repeatability. So these were existing courses that were repeatable in the past, but are no longer repeatable. All of the courses on the first page are removing the repeatability. All of the, all but two of the items on the second page are for removing repeatability. The COM four and the FASHTH one sixty-one were for a five-year review. On the third page, where am I on now? Third page, all of the courses are for repeatability, except for the last one, which is an optional lab to be provided to support students in the geology class. And on the last page, the math department is rewriting their calculation calculus sequence in order to better articulate with the two-year, the four-year institutions, I should say four-year institutions. We are deleting the last four classes, most of them because of the repeatability issue, and one because it, or the last two because they haven't been offered and no longer are part of the program.
Any questions? Any questions or a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the new modifying.
It's been moved in second. All of the favor. Item number twelve, establishment of separate fund to account for the two thousand thirteen sale of the Lindwood Farm proceeds.
Good evening. As was confirmed last week, our joint board meeting was viscerally unified. We are set to close escrow, the sale of the Lindwood Farm at the end of this month for two point five million dollars. The board has made it clear in previous board meetings that they would like to set that money aside in a special reserve to be used on future capital improvement projects. To do so, we need some board action through a roll call vote to set up a special reserve in the name of Lindwood Farm sale proceeds.
Any questions?
If we set up a fund that, as you described, that the board, I want to clarify, the board has the ability in the future to change that C space there. We could turn around and decide to spend it on cost of salaries if we wanted to.
Absolutely.
Correct.
That's your question?
That was my question.
Is that a rhetorical question?
Well, the difference is more big if we, if the board completing it in its own variety.
With our discretion.
To, to, to your market in the future, this makes you fit.
That's correct.
But I can assure you, as long as I'm on the board, I'm not gonna vote for the latter part of your statement. Never say never.
You're gonna be quoted in the paper.
I move we establish the accounts for the sale of the farm, Lindwood Farm.
Second. Shannon, can you please call the board?
Trusty Sherman.
Aye.
Trusty Mann. Trusty Nunes.
Aye.
Trusty Zuma.
Aye.
Trusty Cardoza.
Aye.
Question carries. Item thirteen, bond anticipation notes.
Now for the real thing. Two weeks ago, we had a special study session for the board, where we studied some options on how to pay off our existing bond anticipation notes. You'll recall that in the fall of eleventh, September of two thousand eleven, we took out bond anticipation notes in tune of close to twelve million dollars with issuance costs. Those come due September of thirteen. We presented at the time, two options for, for paying those off. Tonight, we have Cheryl Vesely from Dale Scott and Associates back with us to discuss those two options. The first one being tweaked just a little bit from our special study session, as well as in response to that change in option one, we've added the third option as well. And I'll introduce, as Vesely did, she can walk us through her presentation, and then we'll be open to questions and dialogue on that subject.
Good evening. So I have the presentation similar to the one that we showed two weeks ago. We have another third option, and we have also added sensitivity analysis in the back from the question that came up about assessed valuations didn't grow quite as projected. So the first thing.
I think I'm the designated.
Oh, it's the one.
Is that it?
Yes, that's it. Again, if you remember this one, we've issued series A, series B, eighteen point five million issued, and then there's eleven point five million dollar ban outstanding that's going to be due this September.
I missed the first part.
And then this again is showing the assessed valuation growth. The actual blue, the original projection, it is in the brown color, actually had what we projected this year, so that's nice. Oh, I'm sorry, I, I. So it's a little bit full of what we projected, and it's in the brown for the assessed valuation. And then on the right-hand side is the tax rate projection, and that's just for the series A and the series Bs, not for the, not for the ban takeout. I'm moving kind of quick, just in case. And then the next page again is the AB one eighty-two proposed legislation. This is most likely to go into effect at the beginning of two thousand fourteen, but it would include total debt service to principal bonds not to exceed four to one. Right now, there is no limit to that. All cap appreciation bonds are callable after ten years, and again, there's no limit like that right now. Maturity bonds not to exceed twenty-five years, and interest rate on each bond not to exceed eight percent. So that's AB one eighty-two with those goals. So option one, we did realize in error in the numbers that we had previously. Private Jackery was working on option one, we were working on option two. And when we started cross-checking the numbers, we realized that we weren't able to replicate their numbers. And so we, there's a small tweak here. And the bands, I'm sorry, the, the geo that would have to be issued to take out the bands, now go up for thirty-two years. It said twenty-six years.
So, so the difference with ten million dollars in interest cost over the life of the, between what you proposed and what you proposed two weeks ago to now?
It is, because the cap appreciation bonds now have to go out further, the interest cost has to go up.
But it still stay below eight percent?
It stays, still stays below eight percent. It still stays below the four to one. So all the other things do match, but it, it has increased the debt, the maturity.
It's also still callable after ten years, but the, the major difference is, is two weeks ago, the numbers that we showed being able to pay it off in twenty-six years, and it just, it just didn't work. So we were not able to stay in the neighborhood of the spirit of AB one eighty-two. Now we're thirty-two years for that option.
And option two, it stays the same, and this again is if we take the van out of the van, the van is four million, and then roll over the van to another van that's due in two thousand sixteen, and pursue a geo bond reauthorization option. So these numbers have all stayed the same. And so there would be, if you did that, there would be only current interest bonds to be issued, no cap appreciation bond, twenty-five year repayment term, and repayment ratio would be under two to one. So that, that's all the same. And, and here's again is a comparison of the two options, option one and option two. And you can see the tax rate again on the right hand, the left-hand side is comparing the debt service. The blue is option one, and the red line would be option two, the reauthorization bond. And then on the right-hand side, you can see the total tax rates. It is staying under twenty-five dollars. If you did go forward with option one, it still remains under the twenty-five dollars. It's just a longer term now, so it goes out harder. I think, can you go back one more?
Do you have option three?
There should be option three. Okay.
Oh.
It's option two.
Jen, do you use the, we've got option three in our package.
Yeah, if you have a page three, we have a page.
The tax is correct. Okay, so option three, we want to give you, because we extended the term for option one, the maturity of option one, we wanted to show you a third option. And this kind of combination of everything, where you pay the, the van down, it's four million dollars on hand. You issue what you can now with the geo bond structure that stays in that twenty-five year maturity schedule. So you'd be able to issue about three point five five million dollars in general obligation bonds now. And that would only go out for twenty-five years, and it would stay under that twenty-five dollars cap. And then you would roll over the remaining of the van into two thousand sixteen and pursue a geo bond reauthorization, or paid off the stipends of participation. And if you, in this case, because it's a smaller geo reauthorization bond election, the, the new tax rate would be two point six now, instead of five dollars for the full amount, and now it's about two point six one dollars for a hundred thousand assessed valuation. So it's kind of a partial, partial of all the different options.
You showing overall interest payout for the whole life of those two, that was option three? I don't see that.
Let's see. So for the cap appreciation bonds.
Is that the two items that are on page nine?
I think I do, yeah, is that where I have it?
Page nine, on top of the page.
Yeah, that's eight million dollars, eight point four million. That's it?
So that's a total debt service, so of that about three point five five is principal, so the total interest would be about five million, four and five million dollars. And then for the geo bond, it'd be about three million. I'm sorry, for the second, if you did the reauthorization, the second portion of the geo bond would be about three million.
Do you understand that, Ken? I don't understand option three yet. I'm not, I don't know if I did follow it or... Because option three, all of a sudden, gets me as the best option.
Well, except for, you, you start with twelve, you pay down, you pay down about four, and then it's free, it's any reversals. You're left with, with eight. You can take almost half, say three and a half million dollars, and, and put that in a current general obligation bond. And that fits into the spirit of future legislation, AB one eighty-two. You put that into twenty-five years, assuming a four and a quarter percent of AB growth rate. But you're essentially kicking the can down the road on the remaining five million dollars. The other half would be four and a half billion plus issuance costs. So you're kicking the can down the road for three years, so you're, you're, you're continuing with bands for five million dollars.
But what's the total cost? That's what I'm, I'm gonna add. I mean, is it cheaper than twenty-four million? Or do we not know what it's gonna be?
This would be, option three would be, if you go out for the reauthorization bond election, and you issue it with a new tax rate cap.
Oh, okay, so we gotta go back to the tax rate.
You have to go back to option one and option two. I mean, an option two and option three.
Well, we have, the five million, the five million in two thousand sixteen, great. One option would be to go through a reauthorization. If, if we have extremely high AB growth between now and next three years, you could conceivably issue more geo bonds under our current authorization, authorized but unissued. We'd essentially be in the same situation three years from now, only if they were twelve million or five.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't understand it. Under option one, ten years from now, there, we can pay it off.
Yeah, I, I mean, you'd need something to pay it off with.
Greg's quality.
Could be that reserve that we set up in the last week. If two point five million made rather ten million or more. So my question is, in ten years, how much are we gonna owe?
In, in, in ten years. Yeah, so you would, you would, you would probably, let me see, you would pay off, how much principal would you actually pay off?
It'd be the outstanding principal.
In ten years, yeah, so you haven't paid much principal off, a little principal. So you would, you would owe basically the same.
So we'd probably owe eight million.
Plus any accumulated interest, yes.
We don't know what accumulated interest would be.
It would, we.
So that may not be an option. Ten years from now, we got ten million dollars, and we wanna just pay it off, that's an option.
When, when it comes up, when that would be helpful is if you had great assessed valuation growth, and you can assent refinance it, and you'd be able to issue bonds that aren't these capital appreciation bonds because of your tight assessed valuation.
And we still don't, we have to go back to the vote.
We wouldn't have to go to the vote.
If, if, under option one, would we fit under the potential proposals under AB one eighty-two?
No, that's why we showed option, so you would be going through thirty-two years.
But all except that one.
It's all except for that one.
And so what, what happens in that? Nothing? Is the grandfather hand?
Yeah, yeah, that legislation is not passed yet. It's just what's been proposed.
And we'd be close, Ken, it'd be instead of twenty-six years, it'd be thirty-two. We're six years out, but we would get it, we would get all the other criteria.
All the other criteria.
Stays below payback ratio four to one, stays below interest rate of eight percent. Call it what, call it what, ten million.
Kind of a, maybe a weird question. Had we, had we chosen to do so, could we have borrowed, as opposed to using the, uh, internal borrow, the two point five million from the sale of the, of the, of the farm to, to pay down debt now, and recruit that, or we could issue additional bonds under our sixty million dollar authorization? In other words, we're, we're against using four million of funds that we're, I'm not suggesting we do that, but I just thought that.
I think the question we asked, we asked that during our retreat or something, and I think the question was whether the bond could be able to pay back a loan.
Right.
That was the question. So if the college, we got two point five million coming in by the end of the month, can we use that? Instead of financing the eight million, we'd only finance sort of five point five million. And then whenever the things work out down the road, two years, five years, ten years from now, when there's, when there's equity, can we borrow that two point five million from the Talarri bond to pay back the two point five million that we're using for the assets here?
Can the future issuance pay back?
And I think our concern was that under Prop thirty-nine, we'd be using those resources to pay back an inter-fund loan, as opposed to actually applying them toward the cost of direct construction. And we weren't, we weren't sure about that.
I mean, that would be a good question, because if we can use the two point five million, that's gonna really drop the interest cost in Talarri.
Even if, even if we paid the interest back ourselves.
Maybe a question for our board council.
That's one thing.
But you're really needing us to approve this tonight, so we can move on to getting it done. Otherwise, we're running up against our, what, September deadline?
Right.
We do, but we can accept a, a friendly addition to this, if there's, if there's something like that.
Even if we could use, let's say, half of it.
Yeah, we're not gonna give you two point five million right now anyway, are we? Is that coming in over a period of time?
No. The Visalia farm sale is a lump sum.
Oh, really?
Yeah, you're thinking of the reimbursement for the cost from the city of Talarri.
Oh, okay.
Now, I told you that too, but we take an action tonight that didn't deal with that. Now, talk about that, Ken, if we take an action tonight and didn't deal with that, and next year, two years, whatever, we decide we want to do that, can we come up with capital like that and pay some of it down, or you have to wait 10 years?
I would think have to wait 10 years.
Just like in our current series, and we have Series A and B for off-real, our SFIDs, and those are all non-callable. And so these would be non-callable until 10 years, we couldn't pay them off.
That's it, that's it, they're not callable for 10 years.
I know that based on our presentation we had at our study session, that obviously option one was, was, you know, more than slightly different than what it is today. You know, having said that, you know, yeah, you know, having said that, though, you know, we're still, you know, we're still at a less than a four to one ratio, assuming our numbers are right now. You know, and that kind of puts some uncertainty into this whole process, whereas options two and three, we still have some decisions to make down the road. You know, and we still have some bands outstanding.
Like you said, we're taking...
And we still have the potential of going back to the voters. And I know from a dollars and cents standpoint, if you just do the math and you do the numbers, you know, over time, it costs us less money to go back to the voters and ask them to change the original vote that they, by modifying the amount. And if we do that, we'd probably have to say, okay, you authorize us to issue 60 million in exchange for this issue of $4 or $3, and maybe we'll lower it down to 40 million. You know, I just, the voters I talk to start shaking their head when I talk to them about all this stuff. And granted, the history shows that these things have passed, you know, maybe they just pass because people are not willing to take the time to...
Or they don't understand.
Or they don't, so, you know, we still have some options in 10 years down the road, being able to hopefully issue some of these bonds and pay down, pay down some of these old debts.
So at this point, with assessed values where they are, we are maxed out, and we're going out, at the most, on this last series, we'll be going out 32 years. And we're maxed out. And in 10 years, we look again at assessed values, see if it has to be better, is that correct?
Exactly. And in the meantime, you'd know through option one, that if nothing changed and assessed valuations didn't improve, you'd take an action to ultimately clear this debt. We get the current looming debt we have out in front of us off the college's minutes.
And we really don't have to talk about it for 32 years if we don't want to.
Well, we stay within the 20s by five.
Ken, I think you're getting ready to make a motion, I think. But if you do, is there some way we can tie into that motion, that 2.5 million, if that can be repaid? At least, let's give ourselves the option to...
I think that's correct.
A friendly amendment? A friendly amendment. You'd like to authorize us on option one, it sounds like, with the caveat being, in the next week, Dale Scott and Associates, their office, and I will get ahold of our bond counsel, David Casamoca, and discuss if we have additional cash that we wanted to loan to be paid back by future, future issuance from existing Measure J, is that...
Yeah.
Basically, we're trying to say, we're going to pay down much interest, why don't the college keep it? If in essence, what we're saying is correct?
Actually, the college is not keeping it, it's the taxpayers that are keeping it.
Yeah, but if we're borrowing from ourselves now, the question will be, can we use bond proceeds from adjusted assessed valuations in the future to pay that back?
That's the question.
And if we can't, we can't. But your motion could include the opportunity for us to explore that, and if so, build that into the final deal.
And we made our...
And I understand that this would, you know, in some way, limit our ability to do some other projects with these options.
Yeah, but, but California's certain, suit future, not certain. Do we want to be able to have the money in case of...
I think just ask the question, I don't, I think once we get down to it, we're probably not going to want to do that, but it would be nice to know if we decided we could pay it. But I think we may want to use it in other areas.
If we, now, if we go this route, what could happen if we put the general fund in risk?
Option one?
Yeah.
Nothing?
We do have sensitivity analysis, John, we kind of asked for it last night, if John, he...
What if we have another one?
Which page, Fred?
Your taxes would just, you mean with assessed valuation dropping, you would just have higher tax rates, but it doesn't, there's no rules that it can go higher than $25. The tax rate, so the tax rate might go high.
The $25 is at the...
That's correct. So it says that the valuation's dropped.
Well, Ken, are you looking up in what?
Well, I think it's the west side, I think it's... The longer we look at it, the more it changes.
Well, Laurie, do you have to say, do you, Ken, just like option one?
Yes. I guess with the future so uncertain, I'm okay with logging it something, yeah. Earl, I'm probably going to be...
Do you want to make a motion?
Did you want to look at this?
Not you, Earl.
Yeah, I think we want to look at the information that John requested.
The sensitivity analysis? So fortunately, it's not up here, but we have it, you have it in your packet?
Page 13, right?
Well, you're into, you're into much more.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I would move that we adopt proposal number one, as presented.
And I'll second that.
I move to second it. Any further discussion? All in favor of option one for bond anticipation, have you signed by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed, a comparative vote? Thank you. 14, change orders. Eric, Monday, you will be in the beginning. Maybe a while till we see you, and then on change orders, I think.
There's good news here. These are the last two change orders from Talarri Center. This is, first one is for the Phase One State Project. We have just four here for the electrical finish carpentry painting in Torazo. I would like to note to the board that as we got signatures from the contractors, you notice you never have signatures here, and that's why you have the clearest copy, but I've always got the signatures with, the electrical contractor refused to sign their change order, even though they had signed their potential change order for the same amount. So I have to tell you that the electrical one will be a unilateral change order, so you take the vote. No other changes here. Most of them are the cleanup change orders, you see a lot of bad charges, this is where one vendor messed up. Another vendor had to clean up for them, and there's a charge going to those vendors. At this point, it still leaves us with $261,000 in a contingency fund. There is a pending claim from the electrical contractor, we briefly discussed that. Outside of that, there are known known claims for the Phase One State Project. So with that, it is recommended that the board approve the change orders for the electrical finish carpentry painting in Torazo flooring portions of the Talarri Phase One State Project.
Where's the $2 million coming from, out of the bond, pay back to the...
That would be out of the Talarri Phase One Local Project, the Talarri Phase Three Project. And then in that bond, Measure J, we also had a general pot of money to help us with the relocation from the Linwood Farm, there are savings in all of those other projects.
Up to $2 million.
Right.
We're not going to get a surprise, and it's going to be one decade long.
I'm hoping you get a surprise as 2.5.
All right.
Explain that a little more to three, but no, there's no other known surprises yet.
And a lot of what's happened is closed and done, right? You couldn't have anything from that time.
The window is closing very, very quickly.
I move to approve change order number 14 on the agenda.
Okay, for second. We move, compared seconded by Earl, I believe. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, question carries. Item 15.
For the Talarri Phase Three, same situation, we're closing them out, and to better explain the window of opportunity for someone to pending litigation, during this notice of completion process, we have a 35-day window for vendors to file claims, and that's basically their notice of that window. Most of these are in that phase right now, where we file the notice of completion with the county, where we have not got the 35-day period closed. We have the one known pending litigation with the steel contractor that we've discussed. That potential, just so you know, Ken, has the potential to bring back more money into the pot, but we're not counting on that at this point. So the $2 million that we've discussed about making savings from Measure J among various projects does not include the pending litigation that we may win. Or we think there's no merit to the subcontractor's claim. We are holding that money just in case, even if we were to lose, and give them that money that still has $2 million in the pot. Roughly, roughly $2 million, we're judging the odds at this point. So with these change orders here, for the electrical, different contractor, finished flooring, janitorial, and utility systems, we have the same general cleanups of the end of the project, being told this is the last change order for the Talarri Phase Three Project. In this one, part of that $2 million, there is still $392,000 in contingency. And again, that's what we counted broadly as we tried to come up with the $2 million for savings for management. So it is recommended that the board approve these change orders for the electrical, finished flooring, janitorial, and utility portions of the Talarri Center Phase Three Farm Animal Complex Project.
And all of the furnitures and everything, are they comparable?
They are, there is money earmarked for those in Talarri Phase Three. We have not ordered a lot of that furniture at the direction of Dr. Dudo. We have the list established, we're just waiting for folks to get settled, and then when he gives us the word, we're going to order the remaining amount, but that money is earmarked.
I move we approve change order 15. I'll second.
Move by Earl, seconded by Greg. All in favor of approving change orders, and can I say aye?
Aye.
Laurie, before we do that, we had, at the beginning of the meeting, a young man talked about parking for veterans. And I'd like to see Mr. Carasosa go through some internal process to decide whether or not he wants to bring an issue forward on the board for consideration. And perhaps the next fourth meeting, either have some explanation of why you think we should bring it forward, or bring it forward.
We will do that.
How many vets do you have?
About 250.
Yeah, I was going to say at least 200.
No, he talked about this bathroom, was able to vet, I don't know what he's saying.
Okay, well, I had made notes to do some comparative research, to fill in the information the gentleman provided us, so we'll follow up.
And you notice I left it very open, I didn't say that's what I think you should do.
I understand.